Good morning. Called to order the November 26, 2019 meeting of the Slayton County Board of Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks? Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
I ask you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Would anyone like to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
RFA 182-19, Aetna Better Health of Kansas Grant with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners. What you have before you, Aetna Better Health of Kansas has provided $1,000 grant to the Health Department along with other health departments across the state as part of their community outreach program to use at our discretion. There are no strings or ask of these funds other than we provide them feedback with what these funds are used for, and there is no timeframe on the use of these funds. We just have to accept them. So alternatives are to sign the program intent letter that you should have in front of you as a chair and accept the $1,000 funding, or do not sign the letter. Staff recommendation is that you sign the contract or the letter and allow us to receive the funding, and on budget impact, there is no additional impact to the budget. And we do not have plans yet because we just finally got official word about a week and a half ago of these funds, so we don't have plans yet for what we will use them for.
But from their viewpoint to accept this, there are no strings attached on how we use the money?
No, sir.
Sounds good to me.
Not very often you get one of these.
Yeah, right. Comments from commissioners?
Seems like a no-brainer.
Is there any, being there it is an RFA involved, any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, you have one.
I talk fast, so.
You do. I need to run. Joan Ratzle, Salina, this is great opportunity, so I want to thank Mr. Tiller for bringing it to you. I just wanted to put a plug in for radon test kits because it is, it's already cheap and it's easy and it can save your life. So if they can use some of that for radon test kits and getting the word out to people, because so many people are not aware that it is the second-leading cause of lung cancer death in America. And we have high radon right here in Slayton County. My house was remediated from 13, which is nine points above the action threshold.
And there is radon kits available through our planning commission and upstairs, so...
Yes. Yes, that's great, and also at extension, but if they can increase that outreach to the public, in my opinion, that would be well spent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the Aetna Better Health of Kansas Grant.
Seconded that.
That has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 182-19 for the Aetna Better Health of Kansas Grant. All of those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. The motion does carry. We move on to item number three.
Human Resources Update with Marilyn Lehmer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. For this reporting period, we had six new worker injuries under our benefits and insurance. We did have our open enrollment completed, and we had a smooth transition from a two-tier plan to a four-tier plan that allowed a little more flexibility and coverage for dependents. We did have a few small disruptions for our prescription plan change, but those were minor and they were resolved very timely. September was the end of our plan year, and we did end the year very good at an 86% ratio of funding to claims. Under policies or procedures, there were not any updates there. Under miscellaneous, we did have a successful in-service training day for our employees in October. Under employee update, we have seven new hires, seven transfers or promotions, four that are no longer employed, and we have three vacancies that we are actively recruiting for. Moving forward, of course, we'd like to fill those vacancies. We do have a blood drive in December. We are doing our internal campaign for United Way that will end this Wednesday. We're recruiting volunteers for our employee council through the 6th of December. We also have an illness and disability pool that employees can enroll in, and that is going through the end of the year. And we also have our annual red flag identity theft forms and notifications that's going through the end of the year. And each department head does need to sign one of those to advise whether they extend credit or not. And I do have a form here for the county commissioners that I have pre-filled out for you and hopefully get commissioners to sign that today.
Any comments or questions from commissioners? Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Very well done. We'll move on to item number four.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for October 29th, November 5th, November 18th, and November 19th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the County Commission Minutes of October 29th, November 5th, November 18th, November 19th, 2019.
It has, is there a second?
Seconded that.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve County Commission Minutes for those four dates. All of those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion does carry. We'll move fast forward to item number eight.
Commissioners Update for Livestock and Expo Lease.
Okay. As everyone probably knows, there's been a lot of proposals, re-proposals, comments, so forth, back to the, back and forth between the City Commission and the County Commission regarding the Expo Center. And I will say that it is our intention, our being the County Commission, to forward a letter that I'm going to read to you next week. This is a letter to the Salina City Commission regarding the Expo Center. We're delaying this one week because we want to give the public a chance to comment, and maybe they're not aware of it. Maybe they think this thing's coming together differently than what it is. We're going to allow comments today, and we will allow comments next week as we vote to approve this letter. And the letter is as follows. "The County Commission has had an opportunity to move Mr. Skreggs, to review Mr. Skreggs' correspondence dated November 14, 2019, setting forth the city's response to the County Commission's November 5 correspondence. As you are aware, the county has proposed to invest $5.7 million in the Expo Center facility in exchange for a 40-year lease. The County Commission has had an opportunity to review your response as well as the televised meeting where the City Commission discussed the county's proposal. In reviewing the comments made by the City Commissioners, there clearly is concern with respect to the county's request for a 40-year lease. Several of the commissioners expressed reservations concerning the lease term and had concerns with respect to ongoing maintenance charges and the need to address certain milestones that may arise during the term of the lease. Justifiably so, the city's concerns would need to be addressed in a lease agreement with the county. That being said, a 25-year lease with three, five-year options to extend does not guarantee that a 40-year lease would be in place. There would be requirements by the city placed upon the county for future maintenance and/or improvements which the county simply could not afford or was unwilling to do. In other words, after 25 years, the parties could be in the same place trying to negotiate what improvements would be need, a need to be made to the premises before an extension could be approved. That is exactly the position we're in today. Members of the City Commission also express concerns with respect to future development of the area and how the Expo Center facility would play into said development. A 40-year lease for the Expo Center may not be in line with future development needs. The River Project and potential tennis complex were mentioned as examples. The county shares in those concerns and recognizes the impact that a 40-year lease could have on the development of the land. The county's request to have a 40-year lease was necessitated by the amount of money to be expended for renovations and improvements along with the consideration for future renovations and improvements. Additionally, the county would agree that there may not be a need for an Expo Center after 25 years, or perhaps even sooner. Both entities have expressed a sound basis for their position. Ultimately, what is best for the citizens of all of Slayton County is to do what is best for a long-term planning standpoint as well as a fiscal standpoint. In further reviewing this matter, it appears that most of the events at the location can easily be moved elsewhere. After much deliberation, a majority of the County Commission agree that tying down both entities to a long-term lease doesn't make sense. As such, the county has decided to forego future investment into the Expo Center facility. The county will provide notice to the city of its intention to extend the current lease agreement through August 31, 2021. In order to allow the city to utilize its, the future development plans and to put rest further discussions pertaining to the Expo Center, the county will vacate the premises by August 31, 2021. On behalf of the County Commission, thank you for working through this process and helping to address the issues pending before both commissions. It is a difficult decision to make, but one that will alleviate issues in the future and allow both parties to move forward with their respective plans. And again, that is a proposed letter that will be voted upon next week. And at this time, I would take comments or from commissioners.
The letter states kind of my thoughts, so I don't need to expand on that. I just want to thank my fellow commissioners' thoughts and points about delaying this a week, to be transparent, to take public comments, and I think that that's a proper decision.
I concur.
I concur also, and for some reason I feel compelled to mention some history. And I'm sure most of the people here, I don't know who all's watching this on TV, but the history is, Slayton County owned Oakdale Park for 100-plus years, city-owned Kenwood. And now we are debating on our allocated seven acres allocated for our Expo Center at Kenwood Park. Anyhow, approximately 10 years ago, the county deeded City Salina Oakdale Park, and for some reason, that never got transferred over to our present seven acres at Kenwood. I just find that kind of interesting, and maybe it is time to move on. The highest and best use may possibly not be an Expo Center. I'm not one to judge on that, but looking forward to next week and making a decision.
I'll take it a step further, and from my viewpoint, and this is mine only, that mine surrounds the money. $5.7 million to be spent in the first five years for upgrades and building renovations averages out to $1,140,000 annually and would be added to the approximate $330,000 annual budget for a total of nearly $1.5 million annually. And that $330,000 budget, no doubt, is going to continue to increase as the cost of living goes up. The gross revenue from the Livestock Expo Center for 2018 was approximately $80,000. This year, 2019, the income has been approximately $87,000 year-to-date, so we've got one more month, so it has increased a little bit. But $87,000 or even $100,000, when it's going to cost approximately $1.4 million annually to keep it open, does not make good fiscal responsibility economic sense to me. So, that having been said, I will open it up for public comment. If anyone wishes to address the commission, have anything to say, now's your time.
Rita Deister, 2760 Linda Lane. I've been fighting this battle for 28 years. I know where you're coming from, but I think sometimes there's more to the Expo Center than just how much financial cost it is to the county. It is a community service, and we are an ag community, and we sometimes forget our ag roots. So I would encourage the city as well as the county to consider this a little further, and maybe you can meet in the middle somewhere. Perhaps the city will reconsider the term of the lease. I think that they are unaware or not fully aware of the impact that losing the Expo Center will have on their downtown. Many of the events the Expo Center bring, people from downtown, it does have an economic impact, and I think that by losing the Expo Center, they're going to feel this on their downtown renovation. And so I would ask both the city and the county commissioners to kind of maybe step back and reconsider if there's some middle point. But I know this has been a long battle, and I feel your frustration, so thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Anyone else wish to address the commission?
Norman Mantle, Salina. I know it's a hard decision to lose that property. As Rita stated, it has a lot of significant value history. Can you negotiate with them to save that big ag hall building? That's what I hate to see to go with. The rest of the buildings, they can go, but that's that building. That speaks to us older people and the younger people, as it should. Whether you're going to get an agreement from them or not, I seriously doubt you will because they own the property. They're going to tell you what they're going to do with it. That's, that's when these commissioners that sold that property, they made a big mistake. But were they looking at it from an agricultural standpoint? No, I don't think so. As I understand it, they were not residential rural agricultural commissioners that sold or got the property away from the, let me get that backwards. The people that were in the county commissioners were not rural residential ag-related people. So it is, what it is is what it is.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the commission regarding the Expo Center? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
And I'd just like to further state that we are taking public comment next week before the vote.
We will take public comment.
And I am very interested in what people think, so, sorry.
Agreed. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine.
Pre-trial Statistics Update with Andrew Pelant, Pre-trial Program Coordinator, and Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning. Good morning. Let me get my sheets out. Everybody got a copy of the graphs and the talking points, okay?
We do.
Okay, I'm going to give a little information on our numbers and stats over the last couple months with our pre-trial program. There were, there were 74 placements on pre-trial services in the months of September and October. As of October 31st, 100 clients are actively being supervised, 43 clients are in custody, 81 have had their charges dismissed or have been sentenced, and 52 have had their pre-trial bond revoked. The 52 have had their pre-trial bond revoked. Seven were because of alleged new charges, and 45 were due to failure to appear in court. The 276 placements on pre-trial supervision through October 31st have impacted Slayton County Jail by 12,544 days. October accounted for 2,699 of those days. So far, November through the 19th, 21 defendants have been placed on pre-trial supervision. Eight defendants have had their sentenced, or have been sentenced or had their charges dismissed, and four defendants have had their pre-trial bonds revoked. Number six, I think I've had it on here every time I've come and give this presentation, that just talks about the different community resources that we offer pre-trial clients, anywhere from drug and alcohol evals to treatment referrals to mental health intake and assessment. We've done a lot of referrals for mental health, where our agency will help cover the first four or five sessions just to get someone established in mental health services and medication management if they need it. We've also helped with sober living, housing, City Go bus passes, and different, different things like that. We utilize evidence-based practices, including motivational interviewing and in-house cognitive groups at no cost to our clients. Number eight, there's an update on our IT system regarding client notification of court hearings and other appointments and information sharing with treatment organizations. I've talked with a couple different agencies on what they use. Johnson County has a pre-trial program. Douglas County has a pre-trial program, and so I've tried to reach out and trying to make headway in that area. There wasn't a lot of easy answers with regards to a, a system that works well with client notification. They're out there, we just haven't, you know, talked with other agencies, or it wasn't as an easy answer from them. One agency tried pre-trial program, that's also a database program, and they didn't like it, so they're trying to move away from it. So we're all, we're still trying to find a, a good system, and we've had a couple presentations, so we are still kind of working down that road. I spoke with Shannon Young, which is with Douglas County Pre-Trial Services, and they're the ones that use a CE pre-trial, which they weren't big fans of, so they're trying to move away from that. My next step is to talk with Todd Heischmidt here in Slayton County. I'm, and I might be being over simplistic about this. We have the court, the full court system that our district court uses. It has the defendants, it has their court dates and times in it, and so I'm trying to see if there's, you know, if it's, we can potentially work in a system to integrate with full court that will send out the notifications of court dates and times. And then, again, this kind of goes back to pre-trial best practices. Just getting a simple notification of a court date and time will increase a client's appearance in court, and if you heard my numbers earlier, a lot of our pre-trial revocations are failed to appear in court, so we're still trying to work down that road. One thing we are starting doing a little differently is, some of our clients who are placed on pre-trial that are given cash surety bonds that are still remaining custody, so they, we do the pre-trial assessment, and the district court judges, they still fall under a presumptive bond schedule that they have set out that keeps them in custody until they're able to make the bond. I am sending the judges emails every two weeks now on defendants who were placed in pre-trial with bonds of $10,000 or under, so it kind of, you know, gives the judges reminders that these clients are still in custody, and they'll take a look at bond again and maybe modify it to an amount that they can make, or maybe even give them an OR bond. Since sending those emails to the judges, I have gotten several clients who were, you know, had their bonds modified, the judges addressed them again and gave them lower bonds or OR bonds where they were able to get out of custody and start in our pre-trial program. We do a lot of, well, I wouldn't say a lot, we're starting to do a little more field work. We're trying to, you know, make contact and have a presence out in the community with our pre-trial clients. We do that to verify residences, employment. If we're looking for a client who failed to appear in court, the court gives us about a week to try and locate them and figure out what their barriers are, why they weren't in court, and to get them back into court. So we do spend some time out in the field, and we actually, you know, had an incident the other day, we're out in the field, and we had a truck heading at us head-on, and we were able to pull off onto the side of the road, and the truck hit the guardrail a couple times and came to arrest on the north side of State Street. And we, we keep communication with dispatch when we're out in the field, so we're able to get medical services there. It was a gentleman who was having a seizure in his front seat, and I come to find out later, he was a pre-trial client. And so, you know, we, we do offer a lot of things. We are starting, still moving this program in the right direction. I'm trying to find ways to advance it, and our next, it's still, and I know this is our, my presentation last time, we're still trying to work on the communication piece with the automatic messages for, with the court date and times. And so if you see on the graphs, I know Director Grievous had mentioned this at a prior presentation, there's going to be ebbs and flows, peaks and valleys of this program with regards to how many clients come on. I know you see in October, September to October is a little bit of a dip, but again, there's no rhyme or reason to that. It's just depending on, you know, who's arrested, what their charges are, if they have any other holds, that will determine if we screen them for pre-trial. I don't, just, just with the numbers we have so far this month, I'm going to, those numbers are going to go up again, and so, and that's all I have.
Okay. My question, I'll go back to your talking points on item number five. You say that four out of 13 defendants have had their pre-trial bonds revoked, and I come up with that four out of 13 because 21 was the original number, eight defendants had been sentenced or charges dismissed, and the revoked part is what, what I kind of drive at. So that's roughly about 25% are being revoked. How does that, how does that stack up with previous months? Do you have that number off the top of your head?
Yeah, and that goes back to, let me go back to item number two. That kind of goes back to the 81 who have had their, had their charges dismissed or they've been sentenced, and we consider those successes on pre-trial, those are ones that had their cases resolved without getting revoked. And then 52 have had their bond revoked, and of those 52, 45 are failed to appear, so that's 45 of the 80, you know, compared to the 81 who are successful. Now, that's still a low percentage, 45 compared to the, you know, so, we just had our 300th client come onto pre-trial, and so those numbers are still relatively the same, and I think that's why I kind of preface, our big thing now is just trying to find that notification system, trying to affect those numbers by just doing the, the automatic messages to clients. And now, we're always still going to have our, our small portion who don't want to go to court, for one reason or another, but there's, I still think there's a big portion that we can still, you know, have an effect on once we get that, find a good system that we can use and notify them.
Well, obviously, anyone that, that we help, even if it's just one, you know, is, is progress, but then it comes down to, is it, you know, financially, fiscally responsible spending of money to help just one person, but, so that's something we'll have to decide at a different date. So, what about the other counties? You mentioned Douglas and Johnson, I think?
Yes.
Do you know what, what their percentage of success is?
When...
With the same program?
I don't have any numbers, but with talking to them just on the phone, they actually, it was Douglas, that was Johnson County. Johnson County mentioned to me that our, our numbers are looking really good compared to theirs, but, and they're still, and they're also struggling with the failed to appear, they're just trying to find a, a system to automatically notify clients. But talking with Johnson County, Douglas County, even with our failed to appear, it's, our, our program's still looking really good on the numbers with, you know, having 300 people come into pre-trial, and I know we still have the 40, whatever I mentioned before, the 45 who were revoked because of failed to appear, so compared to other programs, we're still doing really well in that regards. Doesn't mean we aren't going to continue to try and, you know, advance the program and, you know, find best practices to try and get those numbers down.
Okay. Other comments, questions from commissioners?
The bond aspect of this is interesting to me. What, what leeway do the judges have in setting bonds? Is it, is it set?
Judges have a lot of leeway. When I spoke with them before, the, when we give our reports, it's just information reports. The only one, we don't have discretion, because we got to kind of keep it where we're not biased when we do these assessments on clients. The ones that do have the discretion are the judges. So when we get information, we give it to them, whether it's a client's failed to appear history or history of violence, I mean, it all fits on our assessment, but then it's just information for the judges. And so then they'll use that, and that's why we started sending them emails, because they do have the discretion to change the bond amount. So if they put someone in pre-trial, and maybe they fell under a presumptive pre-trial bond of, you know, a cash surety, it could be $2,500, to where, you know, if they work with a bondsman, they would essentially have to come up with maybe $250. If I send them an email and they've been in custody for a week or two, the judges will just take a look at it again to see if each individual client may be appropriate for a modified bond or even an OR bond. And so that's one thing we've done differently, and it has made a difference so far, because we've had several where the judges have re-adressed bond based on my emails and then given them opportunity at a lower bond or an OR bond.
That's a good point. I mean, I'd hate to see the jail filled up with nonviolent prisoners for $250. That just doesn't make sense.
And that's why we started sending those emails, just to, we just, you know, our criminal justice, we work through so many clients, those emails just as a reminder, hey, remember you placed this client on three weeks ago, you gave him this bond based on our screening, they're still in custody, and then the judges... on our screening, they're still in custody, and then the judges will use that to, you know, take a look at modifying it.
What is an OR bond? Explain that again?
It's an own recognizance bond. It's where they're, they can sign their own bond. So instead of putting up a money amount, they can sign their bond, and that's their assurance to be in court, their signature. So they don't have to pay any money to get out of jail.
Then that would normally be extended to one of us, as an example, that they know we're in the community, we're not going anywhere, and they're going to know to, where to find that person and that type of-
Yes. And there's a lot of factors that go into that. Being in the community, you know, if we verify the residence, employment, history of, you know, maybe history of failed to appears or not having any failed to appears and violence. So we, there's a lot of different factors that go into that with the OR bond. But before a judge usually gives them an OR bond, we make sure we get, the one, the things with the cash surety bonds, there's a bondsman that usually posts that. So we have kind of two different entities making sure people show up to court. If it's an OR bond, we make sure we get verified residence and phone number information before they get that bond, just so we can make sure we can keep in contact with them to the best of our ability.
Andrew, I'm going to show my ignorance on this, so bear with me here. Of the, of the people who OR bond out, and I think that's what we're seeing, these high numbers, a lot of these are OR bondings.
Correct.
How many of them would have maybe done a cash bond had this not been available for them? Does that elevate your numbers quite a bit because they're taking advantage of the OR versus putting up some cash?
It does. And that's kind of goes to the crux of what the program was created for, is giving people the opportunities, you know, because Kansas has the right to bail, so there's always a presumptive bond on any, any charge. So what the program does is go in there and says, and you know, like someone mentioned earlier, get the ones who are nonviolent, low-risk, out of jail, who just maybe can't pay, even if it's a low cash surety amount, there's just some who can't pay it. And so our numbers, our numbers do rise significantly with the OR bonds.
My question then, is even a small cash bond a reason for them to show up in court? I mean, is it easier to failure to appear because you're out on an OR bond versus having some cash in the-
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't think that court, with the cash surety, what my experience has been is, I know the original, you know, the intent for the cash surety bonds is to assure, you know, or give someone a reasonable, you know, want to be in court. They don't want to lose that money. But what I've seen over the years is people that have family members post that, so their, you know, their want to be in court might not be as much because if a family member's posting it, and then it might not, you know, make a big deal to them. But what I will say is, I don't, I don't see the correlation with those, with those two. If somebody makes a cash surety bond, I think they're just as likely, according to our numbers, to not show up in court as the ones who have the OR bonds. We have a pretty good success rate with our OR bonds.
Another concern I have is the failure to appear, it's prevalent throughout the arrests in bookings. And these people are getting more charges, they're bringing on themselves, but they're adding charges, another charge and another failure to appear. So there's another charge. And their docket is just growing, something that they are responsible for, but is OR giving them the opportunity to continue to add more charges to themselves?
I don't, I haven't seen that correlation. The one thing that our program and the district court judges have been good about is if we do have someone who misses court, they do give us the opportunity, instead of just issuing, because there are instances where people, you know, end up in the custody of other jurisdictions. And what I've seen over the years, people will, those failed to appear sometimes on those screenings will be a little bit deceiving, because people may be in the custody of another agency that Celine County's not aware of, so then they issue a failed to appear. And I've kind of seen that back and forth. And so the judges do give us an opportunity with the pretrial program to try and figure out what the barriers are. If we can get ahold of somebody, hey, you know, you know you missed court, what's going on? So it's not only about getting them back into court, but was it a transportation thing? Is it a residence thing? Is it a drug and alcohol thing? Are you not stable? So what do we need to put in place that allows you to be more stable and then, you know, in turn have more of a likelihood to make it to court?
Last point. When this first kicked off, I was quite excited. I follow the bookings numbers that's sent to us every day, and it looked very, very good. I was excited that here's something that we can put our teeth into that's going to work. And I've seen the numbers, they're right back to where they were pre-trial. And that concerns me, and I don't know how to correlate all these numbers. And your graphs look great, but the numbers that we have in jail are right back to where they were. And I don't know how to balance that.
I do, and it's, when I look at the jail bookings, some of those failed to appears is our municipal court failed to appears, and that's something our program, we don't, we don't have any connection to the, to the municipal court. We don't, they do automatic bonds over there, and if they have failed to appear, so I, a lot of the ones that I've been seeing are municipal court. I mean, we do have some district court and, but some of the district court, they may not be in the program, they might be on probation. And so I do share your concern with the failed to appears, but I'll just kind of bring it back to the point that there's, we're going to have, you know, peaks and valleys in the program. And so far this month, with the 21 that came on through the 19th, that's already been a, you know, significant increase from the last couple. So I just think, we try to, you find the rhyme and reason with things and figure out what's contributing to it. But I really believe, I think this is just a valley that the program's hitting, and we're going to, the number's going to go back up. It's already shown it so far this month, and so we're just, I think we're just going to see the peaks, we're going to see the valleys. Sometimes it's the time of the year, it's, you know, the old adage that cold weather kind of reduces crime, puts people indoors. It can be a lot of the different things. But I don't, I still think the program is doing what it's supposed to do. And I think as we continue to move it forward and kind of go down these other avenues, if we, once we find a good notification system, once we get involved in some of these other things, I think we'll just continue to move the program forward and we'll see those numbers back up.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm sure Director Grievous has something to add.
I didn't just come up here to sing, although I'm thinking about it now that this mic comes in and out. But Commissioner White, do you have things to say?
Yeah, I was just going to-
Sorry, Mike.
I was just going to mention his ignorance, Commissioner Wees's. Let me try mine, you did a good job, my friend. In regards to Johnson County DOC, and they're using the program, are considering using the program Twilo and CourtBot, but yet we're considering our full court?
That was just one consideration. We're also looking into those programs. So when I call these other agencies, we're all kind of putting our heads together, because it's not just our pretrial program that's trying to find a consistent notification program that's, you know, because we also have sense of information. We want a program that's supported and that we don't, we're not going to have any issues with-
You mean secure system?
Secure, that's what I was trying to look for, a secure system. And we, there's a lot of options out there, but our concern is making sure that whatever we go with is secure, because there is, there can be sense of information that we share back and forth, and we just want to make sure it's a secure program. And we know full court is secure, it's something that's in place, and that's just one, one option, just looking into, because, you know, we look into five or six or 10 options, and we have a better chance of, you know, kind of comparing those all together and finding the best one that's going to fit for the program. So that's just one, one option we're looking into.
And I'm up on this technology, so appreciate that. You have been busy, my friend.
It is busy. I wouldn't have it any other way, though.
Thank you.
Oh, he's so close to my heart, he would have it no other way. Okay, so I just want to mention a few things as you guys were, as the commissioners were asking questions. One is, you're looking at a gal that's been in business for about 35 years, never been arrested, and apparently none of you have either, because you're asking questions that you would have known if you were arrested. But in 35 years, I can tell you that the holidays, the jail will clean out. The summer months, the jail cleans out. There are just trends that happen, and clients tend to want to be home for the holidays, and clients tend to want to be out and about during the summer months, and that is just what it is. And if I could show you 35 years or 20 years of the jail logs, I could prove it. I'm not going to, but it's there. And I can tell you, our caseload's the same way. You know, they do really well during certain times, because they don't want to be away from people. They'll do those kind of things, and then they'll drop back down. And we talked about that when we first started this program, which we're not even a year in. But the numbers are good. In addition to Douglas County, Johnson County, some of the other agencies that have pretrial programs, everybody I talked to, including the researcher that we're going to invest in to validate our tools, is that Celine County's program is leaps and bounds above where any of these other programs are. And for various reasons, the judges didn't buy in, and so some judges won't do pretrial. So that's a problem, you know? The judges didn't develop the tool, and they're not so sure they like that tool, or they're not sure, so sure anybody deserves to have, you know, pretrial. Prosecutors don't allow things to happen. Prosecutors in other districts might argue some of those things. What we have is a panel of three very diligent judges that meet with us regularly, designed the tool, have it brought out, and are so involved, it's beyond comprehension for these other districts. So where we are where we need to be, but I understand the concerns when you saw the numbers drop and now they're back up. But I think without us going through those numbers and telling you if they're Muni Court or state parole or what they are, it's hard to know what those failures appear. Because if we can't touch them, if they're not county people that the district court sees, if Muni Court's seeing them and bringing them in, or state parole is or something, we don't even get to touch those people. Now, if Muni, if the city of Salina wants to invest some money in our pretrial program, we'll be glad to take on the city cases too, and you would see a reduction in those cases. But I'm not going down that path, because the county currently funds this program almost fully, and Community Corrections supports all the additional services, which also include up to about $4,000 the other day to put a pretrial client that hasn't even been sentenced in detox and inpatient beds, and Community Corrections pays for that. So we're all working together, and I think as we, I know confidently that as this program continues and you get long enough to monitor trends, you're going to see improvements. But you would have to break out the city and the state parole and who those clients are, instead of just assuming they should be with us, because only a percentage would-
Do you have the ability to do that?
Huh?
Do you have the ability to do that?
Yeah, we can do that. It would take time, but we could definitely break those out. Well, actually, the jail could, but I hate to just tell them, say that they can do the job, but, because I know how their staffing is too, but certainly we could work together to break that out.
Well, my thought is, as we look at our jail situation, is if we had better numbers that were available to us, maybe we could ask the city or the state for funds to help us further the program. That's my point.
Right. Well, we could definitely break it out. I don't want to panic, Andrew, we would need more staff, and that's what they would have to do.
And I can, if you would like, I can kind of give sort of a micro glimpse. I think I present again here in two weeks, I think it's a quick turnaround. I can keep all jail logs and break down failed to appears. It wouldn't be much for me to do that and show municipal court, you know, KDOC hold a client, you know, and I can break those down just to maybe try and give a little bit of a glimpse into what those failed to appears looks like, at least over a small period, just to maybe give that information. That wouldn't be much for me to do that, I can keep that information.
And I'm going to say, yes, you can, but I also want you to know that he's the coordinator, and he's also, so he does all, a lot of administrative that he won't hand off to me, because he won't let me do things, because he's so invested in this program. Plus, we have an officer. He is working hard, 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 hard. And at some point, we would hope that we can come to some entity and ask for another staff member, so that he can still keep his hands on the work he's doing, but do the administrative things. Because he's mentioned talking to all these programs. So I know you guys have some questions, but I just want to say, someone asked specifically, I think Commissioner White, about full court and these others. I'm interested in what Johnson County's doing. It's a private organization that is secure, that is sending out this information. I don't know the costs, I don't know the details yet. So once Andrew and I can delve into that a little bit, we might be able to, if Community Corrections can afford the cost, we might be able to invest into them and let them do that work until we decide on our best practices tool we want to use. If full court can do it, but I'm very skeptical, but if full court can do it, it would really be at no cost. Full court's already up and running, but it is in an office of judicial justice system. It is not under the county or Community Corrections. We don't have the authority to mandate that. We can ask, and that's all we can do. It's not under DOC. I just don't have any pull there. Maybe the judge is doing, we'll certainly invest in that one too. But those are some things that we're looking, but I do think that we need that process. So if we can find out, and they'll do a contract with us with what's existing and what Johnson County uses, and we can do it short-term, I'll certainly look at the dollar amount and see if Community Corrections can cover that, because I think that would also be significant. But we have to remember too, the client has to have some sort of device to get those notifications. It doesn't just, it has to be a phone or a tablet or something. They, they just can't use, it has to be a smartphone, so it couldn't be a flip phone, it couldn't be a burner phone that they pitched off to the side in three months or whatever that is. So that in turn is also a dilemma, because clients don't have those things all the time. I want to make sure I'm covering everything. So yeah, the leaps and bounds. So we have contacted Alex Holzinger, who is the researcher, you guys have met him, but he does have a lot of information that Andrew pulled together, and he will start looking at what we have. We want to validate this program, we want to validate the tool. And everybody across the state is hanging on to see what we do. Because if we can validate it and we have this, they're going to copy us. And I get calls all the time, you know, we're not going to reinvent the wheel, we want to do what you're doing, let us know, keep us posted, those kind of things. So that's a good thing, but it'll take Mr. Holz, Dr. Holzinger a while to validate the tool and to look at everything. But the information we're going to get from him will be amazing, and we'll be able to divide out all these things, and he'll be able to tell us where we're lacking, where we've done really well, where we could increase those kind of things. So I'm excited about that, but we're probably talking six months to a year before that's finalized. Go ahead, ask some questions, maybe that'll spur my other thoughts.
Andrew, I'll give you my newest last question. You mentioned municipal court and those that are bonded out of that. When they have a failure and they're brought in and booked again, is that on the, on the city's dime that they're housed, or is that on the county's dime?
That's a question I don't know if I can answer 100%. I'm not, I would, I mean, I would guess it's on the city's dime. If it's a, if it's a municipal court case and a failed to appear and they get booked in under the municipal court case number, I would imagine that's on the, on the city's dime.
I think you guys have a contract with the city in hand that can reflect that, but there's a contract that's been in existence for a long time, and you negotiate with the city, and they pay a certain amount of bed space, and the county covers a certain amount of bed space. So that's how I think it's done. I don't think it's divided out by each person that comes in.
Yeah, it's a flat fee that's negotiated.
Correct. There's a couple of different elements that are associated with it. Not only is it the jail stays, it's a 911 dispatch center, and it's also evidence technician stuff or evidence storage. So it's a convoluted type of calculation, but that is correct, the city does pay for their portion of housing.
Well, Andrew, if this, beside this being the right thing to do, this was created to reduce the jail population. So if we don't have buy-in from the municipal judges, I mean, what do you need from us to help that happen? Because if they're setting higher bonds, I mean, if we've got our three, that's great, but if the majority of the people aren't, aren't on board on this, I mean-
And I've, with regards to municipal court cases, and I've talked with my, when we first started this program, I kind of talked with Christina Trocheck over there about what they looked at. And they, the municipal court gives almost automatic OR bonds on all their cases. The only times you're going to see them on the book-in is if, most likely if they picked up new charges or they failed to appear. I guess the example I can use is the gentleman who was, seemed like he was booked in and booked out two times a day, three times a day there for several months, is because of their automatic ORs, and that's what the city does on every single one of their cases. So if you see them on the book-in, it's because of either potential, you know, new charges or failed to appears in court.
Thanks for clearing that up. Thank you.
But I would say that even if they're on OR, if they were getting some supervision and some assistance and things like that, they may not have to be booked backed in. They may make a difference. They may make a difference. We don't know, because we don't know who those clients are, or what they look like.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you for all your comments, and Andrew, obviously you're hard at it, so.
Thank you.
And no matter what you're, and I don't think you're feeling this, but there's no, there has never been anything out of any commissioner's mouth that we're going to pull the plug on this thing. We want to see it continue and see where it takes us, and hopefully it's going to be to the right place. So thank you.
Yes, I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of today's agenda. So as far as announcements and other business, I would like to make the announcements that there are several openings on county-appointed board member openings, and these are effective January the 1st. We have one position open for a crime victim fund board. We have two Department of Senior Service Advisory Council members' positions open. We have four Community Corrections Advisory Board positions that are open. And 28th Judicial District Lawyer and Nonlawyer Members, there are two positions open. Please stop by or go online and get a application to serve on one of these boards. We desperately would like to have someone involved. Also, I want to announce that on December the 6th at 2:00 in the afternoon, we will have an open house open to all the public. It'll be downstairs in room 107-
109, sir.
109, excuse me, to welcome our new county administrator, Philip Ainsmith. So if you can come, please do so. Refreshments will be served. Any other announcements or comments from commissioners?
Yes, Chair, Wednesday I was able to attend a panel with leadership Salina on the subject of jail population and the needs at the jail. And then Friday, I was able to join with other staff and some commissioners in serving dinners at the senior center their Thanksgiving. And it was really great to see different departments come together and to assist Rosie over at the Department of Senior Services in serving and joining each other.
Any other comments?
Approximately 200 meals that day, and Commissioner Wees finally brought some good help with them. He brought his wife to work the function, so that was appreciative, so.
All right. That having been said, then I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, then we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post, same sign. The meeting is adjourned. We will have a second study session or administrators' update meeting immediately following. Thank you.